Evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of March, or March, February 2023. Uh, let's start with any council updates or questions you might have for tonight?
Quiet week, man. No, no updates?
No updates by North Metro Arts Alliance, who is from theirs. With human, um, Leslie, uh, North Metro Arts Alliance, as well as the Historic Limerick Board, both of my boards and commissions, and just wanted to thank him for the service that he's done for us.
Dr. Cox had a meeting, but most meeting was spent re-elected by the officers. And then, of course, next night, I was, maybe noise roundtable, pretty accurately reflected in the newspaper, was the packed house, and there were angry people. So, we need to have a talk about what we want to do when we, because I think you're absolutely right, Mayor, we owe it to the other members. I'm curious if I can talk about that, so whoever goes, and I think they don't allow any, uh...
Rep. Tim?
Um, first, with that, I will, in the noise roundtable this week, since nobody else came, um, so I did have Environmental Advisory Board last week, and they really were talking about their, I think I've shared with you guys before, they have a full program that they're trying to get together and what content they want to cover, and they've been working with that as well. Um, they're still working on getting an actual outline given to us, so that we can prove our case. And one thing I shared with them, kind of, they, they started talking about goal setting for the year, and I talked to them, kind of, about the conversation we've had as far as lining up with their strategic plan, so that, you know, they're not going down one path on something, then having to come back to approve it, opposed to, you know, just being able to line up with them and have their work already kind of approved. So, Paul had recommended to them to, you know, look at that. He sent around to them the strategic plan, and they were gonna regroup on that after they do the Board and Commission on Boarding, our strategic plan, so. Um, but they had, the other thing that they, I wanted to go over what their goals were, so they had the presentations, um, they talked about doing more events, which is something they do. I know they were focusing on the tree problem that we have with the ash trees in the last year, and then they wanted to look at, their potential goal was to look at investigating state programs for e-bikes and commuters, and I know that their chair had come and spoke to us about that before, so, um, that was primarily what they discussed at the meeting, which did end up being pretty much all virtual, because it was the night that still had somebody phoned in.
One, thank you, Councilor Baker, for covering Dr. Cox last week, even though it wasn't so exciting. Um, I know, I was looking for, I know, I know there's a, um, there's a Jefferson, well, one, there's a Dr. Cox work session this week. It feels like some of these things fall off my calendar, so.
We'll check on those.
Um, so, if that is the case, I will attend that. And then, just one thing I wanted to bring up, I know we've talked about it a lot, but the, how we handle HOAs and our, their ability to redesign and redo their landscaping. Um, we've talked, we actually talked about it a long time ago, and Environmental Advisory Board didn't really make any headway, and I really feel like it's on the city's side to come up with a different approach to these, because we, I mean, technically, they run into, oh, you have to update your official development plan, which costs money, it takes time, and more expertise than what a lot of these HOAs have, and, um, I just want to propose, you know, if we could get some type of study session on this, where we could understand what does it take, what can we do to make it easier, to really facilitate getting these HOAs and landscaping upgraded, and is there something, you know, are there ways where we can facilitate that happening? Um, because it behooves us as well, because it helps us to conserve water, and these are huge water consumers, and it's also hugely impactful to the residents, and it's not just water, sometimes it's, you know, the, some of the infrastructure, whether it's little private roads that really have an impact on, you know, like, small town home communities or small condo communities, they have a really hard time pulling together the assessments, especially because these are often some of our lower income households that are homeownership, and so I just, in the sake of, for the sake of housing preservation and water conservation, I'd be curious if we could look at that and see what we could do.
I think there's been at least three or four people say exactly that over, over the months, so, I too, cut the red tape, let's get it, we know what needs to be done, now tell me why we can't get it done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Because I've heard, I've heard people begging, because they do have so much, some of our areas have a lot of land that they have to water and...
Here, if I could comment? So, I met with some, some residents today that are very concerned about water rates, things like that, and they provided us some recommendations, you know, of things that we could do, and so, brought those back, was talking with the DCMs and the leadership team, and this exact topic came up, and so, you know, we all had that conversation earlier today about, you know, what is it in our codes and our ODPs and some of these requirements that make it difficult for folks that, you know, essentially built, you know, housing developments 20-plus years ago, when that all made sense, but today, given our current water restrictions, drought, things like that, it just doesn't make any sense, and so how can we make those adjustments and make those improvements? And so, we certainly get that, we'd be happy to bring it back, you know, for a council study session, and so, it's all right with you all, I think that would be in the community's best interest, so.
Sooner than later.
Sure, we can certainly facilitate that. Okay?
Rep. Tim, did you...
Um, just on that same note, I have a feeling probably a lot of us have talked to the same folks, but one thing that I want to make sure is, topic of conversation, in case it's not on your list, is the areas where our open space ends up, and I go in through the private areas, and they're maintaining what a lot of people probably treat as our open space or trails, that are really, end up being owned by the HOAs and cared for by the HOAs, even though the city at one time sounds like they probably dictated that they have those, so I want to make sure that we're addressing that.
And that was part of the commentary from the discussion today, so I think we are talking to the same people.
I figured, but I wanted to make sure, because that was brought up.
Absolutely.
And they're, they're, they're not unique, there are so many HOA communities, and again, it's not just the landscaping, it can also be some of the private infrastructure improvements that are prohibitive.
Better, understanding.
Thank you.
I have a couple things, just to report out, that last Thursday and Friday, I sent emails to all of council saying that I needed to know if you supported the Fremont Fair that RTD does, the state has it in the budget to do, it was heard today, and Senator Winter, one of our senators, leads that group, and our Northwest mayors and commissioners and commuter, commuting solutions were putting a letter together, anyway, explained all of that, that either, did we support it or didn't we support it? We had two firm no's, we had one that wanted to explore in study session, and we had four yeses, so, for the record, that's what came back, because it was happening today, so I said I would report out and am, and then, um, Thursday night, when Mayor Protam is going to go to the roundtable for Rocky Mountain Airport, um, number one, you need to understand, he may have to abstain, because we weren't a part of that process, no one went to the meetings where these people were interviewed, so I have contacted Ben and Devin, who's the chair, and said, you will be coming, and that I understand about one of the agenda items, but only take it as an abstaining, because we weren't part of the process, and don't read anything into it, we weren't part of the process, and so you wouldn't know what you were voting on. Um, but the second piece is that, I've been asked, is, it would really be nice to know if we are going to stay in it for the next coming year, June to June, um, when that dues goes up, to pay for the facilitator, because if we're not going to, others participating deserve to know, because their dues may have to go up, because we're backing out. So, they would really love a precursor of where are we sitting on that, so that I can get back to them, and I told them I would bring it tonight and see where we sat, and so that they have a heads up. Council Baker?
First of all, I'd highly recommend that we officially designate Air Protam as the alternate, because they are sticklers of them, otherwise they may just ignore them.
And for those that don't know, they've moved it to Thursday night, and I have yappers, and I'm not willing to give them up, so, I can't go, so if you're willing to be...
I just couldn't do it on Mondays, it turns, I miss work for.
And it's now evening, six to eight, so is that okay with everybody? That he's our rep? I'll let them know that, so that you're official.
And then, speaking to the issue, I say that we do not participate in this. I do not feel, I feel that Jefferson County is the authority there, they hold all the power, if they want to do a study with their money, I think that's fine, but to get the members to pay for a study, which then they don't have that much vested interest in, I think it's easy for them to ignore it, and anyone who saw what was going on at that meeting, so many of the people think of being ignored, that this is just a straw man, that this is just a waste of their time, and I agree with that observation, so I don't want to pay the extra dues.
Councilor Emmons?
I don't disagree, however, Mayor, you were here when we started the Transportation Coalition, how long did that take to get up and running, for them to actually be effective? Because I don't see it being effective for the next two, three years, because they're trying to figure out what they can't, what they have jurisdiction over, what they can, what they can participate in, but part of the reason we got with the Transportation Coalition is because we felt there was more power together than separately, so, from your perspective, I mean, did it take years, did it take time to build up that?
Northwest Corridor's been together for 25 years, 20 of those years going back to DC as one, and as I tried to share, when we met with all of that delegation, they know that, and that's what makes us powerful, because they're not having to go, oh, Bo wants this, Longmont wants this, Westminster wants this, Erie wants this, and they can only pick one thing, so this is where we come together, what's major, and ask.
And so, Councilor Baker, I, because I was trying to justify, like, how do we justify this process if we stay in, and I was seeing similarities between our Transportation Coalition, so, um, with that being said, I think there's great value in a more powerful voice with us being together than separately, so.
Um, Mayor Protam?
I certainly, I watched the whole last meeting, and I empathize with the folks, and I feel their frustration, because it's a slow process, but much like, I think that, you know, we haven't been in it long enough to know where it's gonna go, and so I think another year, you know, is, makes sense, otherwise I think we've wasted the last year, and if you look at the increase in what it is, in terms of our budget, it's really not a big dollar number, and we got into this because the community wanted us to do something, I know the community would like it to go faster, but we are trying to do something, so I think we owe it to stick it out.
Well, and because, I just want to share, they, they heard the community say, because those 50, 60 people said, we've had to either take off work, call in sick for half a day, whatever, to be at that meeting last week, so the meetings this, this month start six to eight in the evenings, so that people don't have to take off work, so, um, anyway, did you have that?
Um, I, like Mayor Protam and Councilor Emmons, I also agree that, you know, we, we stand together with the rest of the communities, and, you know, if we can be effective that way, better than individual.
Yeah, this is a tough one as far as effectiveness, but we did, I'm thinking of the individual residents that have come to us, that have spoken to us, that I know, and, you know, they're very frustrated as well, and I think they look to us to have a voice, and it's more about what we can do for them, and if we're not in, we have, we have less voice, and so I, yeah, I hate to be forced into that position, but I think that's, right now, that's pragmatic at this point.
Yeah, I think if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, right? So, we gotta stay at the table.
Oh, my goodness.
No, this is for me.
Um, listening to, to that meeting, um, there's issues that we know are coming up that the airport doesn't take care of, but CDPAG has gotten involved with the lead and with those kinds of things, so, um, and we know some of our residents, and heard some from the superior residents, that's their key thing, so there's residents that have different, there's more than one thing happening here, um, in talking to some of the other key people from the cities, since I spent a fast two, two days in DC with them, as we were walking to places, just sort of asking, and, and they've echoed what you all say, they feel, let's try it with some focused leadership, um, see what happens, and have this conversation in a year, because there'll be a year from now where they'll probably re-upping a, a contract, and see where we're at, give it a chance, so that's certainly the side I believe we need to be on, especially listening, we have got some great residents have, have backgrounds in, in some of this, and, and have given great information to the people of what to even look at, so, um, I think we owe it to those folks to, for one more year, if that's okay? Yeah?
If I could give a bit of really rebuttal, remember, this is a voluntary committee with no power whatsoever, we don't have to worry about being on the menu, because there is no menu. To me, I think we're holding up a false hope to our citizens that this organization can do anything, and yet it can't, it's not authorized by law, it's not authorized by anything. I think there are much more important foundational questions, fundamental questions, such as, what is the future of the airport? Is that gonna be a forever airport? Or does it have a lifespan like really Stapleton and Lowry did? And those are much more profound questions, and I think the CNR acts as a buffer for the people in true power, and those are the Jefferson County Commissioners. I mean, I think to make a noise complaint, they shouldn't be made to the CNR or the airport, they should be made to the Jefferson County Commissioners, and so I think by us participating in it, it leads a false hope among our citizens, and that's what I see as the biggest negative, it isn't about the $12,000.
I guess I just see it differently, not because, I mean, the, there's little power, I don't disagree, however, when they came and spoke to us, when the director of the airport came and spoke to us, they made it very clear that the FAA has set these noise roundtables up as the avenue in order to make the complaint, so even though you don't, all you can do is make the complaint, that is who they are gonna listen to, that was my understanding, when the, I cannot remember the director's name, but when, when he, when he came and spoke to us, that was what was shared, and that was actually the defining reason why I said that we should get back in, because if that is the avenue in which they're gonna listen to, then we don't have an option, in my mind, to not try to use the avenue that the FAA is laying out, and, and that's what was shared with us, so I wish there was a different avenue, I wish we could go to Jefferson County, but that's not, that's not the way that it's laid out with FAA.
That is in my understanding.
We, I mean, we, I'd be happy to dig into that and clarify, but that is certainly what I took from, I don't, everybody else was there, but that is my understanding from what the director of the airport shared with us.
So, for budget purposes, you'll know that's coming and can get it into our report plan?
We will do.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Do you have anything? Okay.
Mayor? Yep, I'm sorry, I have two weeks with the holiday, I did, didn't share, I don't know what the, I'm trying to onboard still with Legacy Foundation, and so, like, four o'clock, I get a thing saying I had a meeting, and so it was for that, and I happened to be in from my computer, so I hopped on, so, real quickly, they talked, they added Julia Abell from the Chamber, is now a board member on Legacy, they talked about some of their goals as far as fundraising, they wanted to make it mandatory 1,000, personally pushed back on that, just because I think it's not as inclusive if you say 1,000, I've seen other boards say that they, they require some sort of cash donation, they recommend something, but I think that's a barrier from what I've seen in other organizations, of very good board members who might not have cash, but are willing to do the, the labor. Um, so, you know, it ended up going that way, there's still a recommendation to do, I think it was 1,000, but, you know, it wasn't required, besides, everybody has to donate something, and then they talked about three of their goals, which this is kind of the first time I heard them, something, a task force with homelessness, which I was told Counselor Azadi, Alan Farb, Arm Bigelow from Thornton were on that, I was curious about the crossover with what our organization is already doing as a city, and then they had something with Emerald Ash Bore, again, and we didn't get to talk through all these, but I was curious about the, the crossover, I didn't, you know, I'm not real sure exactly what they're doing, and then their other big goal was outreach for the park at Irving Street, so I wanted to bring back that those were the things that were talked about at the board meeting for Legacy.
There's nothing else, we'll go take a quick break and see you at the dais. They're all the nominators for Brent. Is everybody ready? Welcome to tonight's meeting of February 27, 2023. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome everybody to tonight's city council meeting. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in the audience that our meetings are subject to rules of decorum and that are posted at the back of the room. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and place cards are prohibited in council chambers and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. If you do want to talk with somebody, please go outside into the hallway. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dmat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nirmella.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the February 13, 2023 meeting as presented.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February 13, 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And that brings us to Counselor Emmons is to proclaim February 27 as the 20th anniversary of the inception, since the inception of the City of Westminster's spirit values. Any employee can come on down.
Well, I'm gonna let you introduce yourselves and how you play a role in the City of Westminster.
Hi, there. I'm Chris Lindsay. I'm an Assistant City Manager.
Deputy Director of Administration.
ABG, HR Director.
Erickson, HR Manager.
Derek, HR Chief.
Dean Blon, Deputy Commissioner.
And the Spirit, the Spirit proclamation has been in place for 20 years, which is an amazing accomplishment, not only for staff, but for a city, the level of service in which we provide. And with that, it doesn't say it in the proclamation, but it says it in the Council of Portland, to have it be heard. But the service provides exceptional customer service and handles the concerns and issues of our customers, internal and external. The P is the pride, which serves as, excuse me, as an ambassador, displaying pride in their job, as well as the city, other employees, department, and division. Integrity demonstrates in all actions, a high level of ethical behavior and does the right thing. Responsibility, which we are, establishes accountability to the city for job functions and assigned duties as outlined in their job description. I is the innovation, which understands customers' needs and expectations and seeks opportunities to improve the internal and external customers' experience. And finally, T is teamwork, which values teamwork and supports the efforts of fellow employees, both individually and collectively. And there's much more in the report that accurately describes our employees. Just thank you for everything that you do. And we have seasoned employees with me up here, but not just that, but just, just what you do every day for residents, for our community, to make this a great place to live, work, and play. With that, whereas the city has identified a clear set of expressed organizational values within the acronym of SPIRIT, which stands for service, pride, integrity, responsibility, innovation, and teamwork. Whereas, February 27, 2023, will mark the 20th anniversary of the inception of spirit values at the City of Westminster. And whereas, the spirit values support an organizational culture of excellence, whereas the workforce has contributed significantly to the quality of life for the community of Westminster. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Nancy McNally, of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim February 27, 2003, as City of Westminster Spirit Values 20th Anniversary.
And City Clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have one person to sign up to speak live, and we also have one voicemail. So the first person to speak live is John Palmer.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, we had a video lined up to show. Were we prepared to do that, City Clerk? Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't know if it was going to be entered, your reporter.
Team, I just wanted to say. We could go ahead and show the video. It pertains to spirit values.
Perfect.
If, how important values are to any organization. When I came here to the City of Westminster, I was so, so pleased and happy and proud to be part of an organization that already had values assigned. And they've been here for 20 years, and that's what we're recognizing, you know, today. And that is 20 years worth of our spirit values, service, pride, integrity, responsibility, innovation, and teamwork. What I wanted to do is, is just say thanks so much to former city manager Brent McFall, who in 2003 identified these organizational values, because those values really have remained unchanged for the past 20 years.
But it's not just what we do here in the City of Westminster, it's how we do it. And we've taken an extra step here and defined our values. And those values are called out in an acronym of SPIRIT. And SPIRIT stands for service, pride, integrity, responsibility, innovation, and teamwork. And those are the things that guide our actions every day. Every organization that you're a part of really has a set of shared values. They often don't talk about them, or don't even realize they have them. But it usually has something to do with, with how comfortable you feel in that organization. When I became city manager in Westminster in 2001, what I did was observe what was going on. I went out and talked to employees, and I listened about how they felt about their job, how they felt about being a part of the organization. And I heard words like service. I've heard words like teams, teamwork, and pride, and all the things that ultimately, I simply gave back to the city staff as a, as a way of saying, these are the things I have observed in how you feel about this organization.
Hi, let me be among the first to welcome you to your new employment with the City of Westminster.
We integrated into employee selection. We integrated it into employee value, performance evaluation. And so it really became then a part of the city's culture. We introduced this with the first ever all-employee meeting. We literally packed the ballroom at the Westin Hotel for a meeting to introduce this whole notion.
Even though our city has one of the world's most beautiful backdrops to enjoy, the Rocky Mountains, we discovered it's not the altitude that makes this city so terrific, it's the attitude and the spirit of the people who work here that sets our city apart.
We actually used, not only me speaking, but video of a variety of city staff talking themselves. They didn't even know, when they were being filmed for this, what it was leading up to. But again, they were using words.
They're for citizens. We're there for the community.
City of Westminster has high expectations.
They really do care about the call.
Born and raised as a citizen of Westminster, and I have a great deal of pride in the city, so I want to be a part of that, that city service that served me for so many years.
I saw it as the beginning of a journey. Over the course of that journey, these things would, would evolve and grow. To me, I think the important part is, is having the conversation and saying, okay, what do we collectively believe in? And how do we believe our, our collective behavior should be guided? Again, I, I think that just helps people understand what they're part of and, and how they can contribute to making it even better in, in their own individual ways.
You are now a valuable member of a team striving to create one of the most dynamic and thriving cities in the country.
Those values really have remained unchanged for the past 20 years, and they've guided how we've chosen to hold ourselves accountable, but then also how we've interacted with the community. And I just think it's a testament to a great set of values, and very, very pleased that Brent was able to identify that need and that they've stuck with the city for so long.
Having those values in the forefront after all these years is, is rewarding to me and, and gives me a feeling that I have helped contribute to, to the well-being of the city as well.
And I have a feeling, Brent, you are listening to us tonight. So thank you for everything that you did 20 years ago. Okay, John Palmer, come on down.
Hello, John. This working? John Palmer, City Resident. I would like to thank City Manager Fryteg for the assistance he rendered over the past week or so. I called with some questions. He got me answers in a very timely fashion. I truly appreciate that. While we're on the spirit values, let's talk about that. For the most part, city staff lives up to it. However, there's one department that falls way short on the service value, and that's community development. It sometimes takes weeks, if not months, to get a return call, if at all. That, that's not a spirit value that, that's not representing the spirit value. And that happens all the way from the director Downing all the way down. Okay, so again, not spirit value from that department. Next, let's move on to another more important issue. In regards to recent events with train derailments, up in the past month that I'm sure you're all aware of, one in Ohio, one in Nebraska, the citizens of the city have a right to know what hazardous and toxic chemicals are being transported through our neighborhoods. It would be nice if the city can inform us and keep us safe. Next, where can the citizens see the emergency plans regarding this type of accident? I'm sure we have them in place. Again, where can a citizen go to see these plans? The citizens of this city need to know that they are safe, that their health is being looked after, as well as the environment. It's not if, but when the next Burlington Northern accident will occur. They've already had two, one being in 1985, when the two trains collided underneath the older turnpike, Highway 36, burned for several days, destroyed the highway, had to have the bridge rebuilt, CDOT. The next happened in 2008 over off of Colorado 121, also known as the Wadsworth Bypass, and 98th Avenue, when we had a derailment. Thank God, nobody was hurt. It just seems with everything that's been going on, that we need to take a closer look at this and make sure that we have the proper emergency plans in place, not just for the citizens, but for you also. Several of these train tracks run close to your neighborhoods also. Mostly concerned about the people in southwest Westminster, where the majority of the residents are but to the railway. So again, it would be nice if I could have an opportunity to see the city's emergency plans regarding rail accidents. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last person I had signed up to speak. Can we play the voicemail back?
Ladies and gentlemen of Westminster and members of city council, hello, this is Charles Major. And I had just one quick question before tomorrow night's meet and greet for our new police chief. Who on this dais and who in the audience knew that in 2005, our interim police chief, Norm Harbert, was criminally indicted by an Adams County grand jury on charges of assault, official misconduct, and filing a false police report? Police chief at the time, Dan Montgomery, said, and I quote, "I'm so embarrassed over this. They let us and the community down. I won't tolerate this kind of misconduct. These are certification killers." Ladies and gentlemen of Westminster, the people on city council, or the majority of people on city council, want to keep this information from you. They want to keep this information from the public. Because frankly, they think you have absolutely no business asking these types of questions. Because frankly, they think you have absolutely no business asking these types of questions or knowing these. I asked who was mayor back in 2005. So that's right, Nancy McNally. So before the final selections tomorrow night, ask the hard questions of the police chief candidate, ask the uncomfortable questions, because I guarantee you interim chief Harbert did not want anybody in the city of Westminster or anybody on this dais recalling this incident back in 2005. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
That's all I had. Thank you. City managers' report.
Good evening, councilors and mayor pro tem, mayor and mayor. Wanted to provide a quick update with some things going on in the community. So next slide. First of all, as referenced in the, the voicemail, tomorrow night, we are hosting as a city, a police chief candidate community meet and greet. So all five candidates will be present. That's tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. It's at City Park Recreation Center. You'll be able to, anybody who attends will be able to meet the candidates and then be able to submit comments about their perspectives on the candidates as they met them and then to rank those candidates. And so this is really, tomorrow is the first day of our interview process. So it starts tomorrow, goes Wednesday, goes Thursday and potentially has some opportunity for a little bit of spillover into Friday and/or Monday. So it's a long process. It's an important decision. The one thing that I would point out is, is that once we do make a selection, that it's still weeks after that while we run through some, one, negotiations, but also some background checks and things like that. So we're really talking, the announcement of the permanent police chief will be towards the end of, of March. And so just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. But for the community, we really, really, really want the community to come out and meet the candidates, talk to the candidates, provide, you know, the hiring team, perspective, thoughts, and then to rank order those folks, you know, one through five. Where do they stand with you? Because your voice, your voice and your vote, they matter to us. And so this is something that we've got in upwards of 10 different touchpoints, all playing into this decision. And so lots of different perspectives, because it shouldn't be just one perspective. It should be the community's perspective. And so we invite folks to come out to that. Water in Westminster webpages have been updated. And so if you visit our city website slash water, anything you want to know about water, you can certainly do. And then city website slash water in Westminster, about the future kind of. So current state is slash water and where we're going is water in Westminster. So lots of great information out there. Something that is new to me, but I've been invited to participate as a veteran library book, I guess, is to open up your world with a trip to the human library. And so instead of books, readers can check out and engage with real people from a wide variety of special groups, backgrounds and points of view. And so this year's event is March 8th from 10 AM to 2 PM. And that will be held at Front Range Community College and I look forward to participating in that. Next slide. Some Westie wins. So, you know, several weeks ago, the council heard a presentation on the Westie Water Portal. And so that launched officially on February 14th. It does allow the public and our customers to pay their water bills online, to monitor hourly water consumption, any, and you know, essentially opt in to receive emergency leak alerts via email and more. So if you want to hear about that Westie Water Portal, you can certainly go to our city website slash Westie Water. And then we wanted to highlight that the Friends of the Foothills Animal Shelter, it's a nonprofit arm of the Foothills Animal Shelter, proper was awarded the nonprofit of the year by the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. And so they provide animal shelter and animal welfare services, both in Jefferson County and then across Westminster. And so good news story for our community. Next slide. Some things to know, planning commission meeting. I understand that that may have been canceled. Could I ask the clerk to verify that you're tracking that that's been canceled for tomorrow night? And so that's a change since our slides were produced. Special permits and license board meeting, Wednesday, March 1st, 7 to 8:30 PM here at City Hall Council Chambers. And then the city council special study session, again, Monday, March 6th on our normal schedule at 6:30 here in the city council boardroom. Next slide. As always, encourage folks to reach out and, and contact us. We certainly want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, accountable. You can contact me in the city manager's office at 658-2006. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us. You can like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, check us out on Instagram or ring our bell at nextdoor. If any questions, that's all I have.
Just one correction, it's West Metro Chamber.
Where was that?
Oh. The North Metro's no longer, but it was the West Chamber.
Okay, we'll take that for no, thank you.
No problem. Any questions? And congratulations to the Foothills Shelter. They shared how much our Chris Lindsay helps on their board and everything that they do. And just that day, they had let a Frenchy go to somebody, not me, but anyway. It was a great night. Council comments. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, mayor. I mean, several weeks ago, I asked my colleagues on city council to explain to me the growing menace that will the new downtown, the mostly vacant Westminster Mall, pose to Westminster and the people of Colorado? No one answered my question. The, the only, the only response I received was that the issue was a moot point and my continued appeals really of the, to, my continuing appeals to, to discuss the matter was really baiting and infuriating my colleagues. I do not consider the issue trivial or a moot point. Furthermore, as my colleagues observed, while council has had informational meetings about the new downtown, council has not had a really specific meeting in which different courses of action were explored and affirmative direction for the new downtown was given to staff. Council has allowed the new downtown to move forward by default. I consider an affirmatively directed plan for the new downtown to be an important job of council. I think that, I think that the plan, whether it be a, whether it be a continuation of the ongoing plans or a new really direction, must be openly and meaningfully discussed by every newly elected council. Furthermore, I consider how we got in this current situation to be an ethical issue that, that really directly relates to our really, of the strategic plan principles of transparency and accountability. And as an, and as important as it is an ethical issue, the more current and immediate issue is how does this help the city today? Perhaps that is our really stumbling block preventing of, I mean, the discussions is how would such a discussion help us today? This really council would rather not find fault with previous councils. Finding fault would be hurtful and embarrassing. Finding fault would really lessen, I mean, would lessen the prestige of really previous councils. Finding fault would show how well the missteps have been made. It would be far easier to let sleeping dogs lie, to keep quiet, to let the past be the past. However, I think it is much, there is much to be gained by really such a discussion. Not that we can undo past errors, but that we can show better ethics for Westminster. Ethics, well, the ethics of an organization begin with the leadership of the organization. If really leaders do not have good ethics, then, then that lets ethical lapses to occur throughout the organization. We have all seen the harm caused to organizations by lack of ethics. We know the stories of lack of ethics, building inspectors that take bribes. I mean, the police officers that really turn off their body cameras, selective enforcement of law, really nepotism and favoritism in really hiring. Remember when Mountain View, a little community just south on Sheridan Boulevard, had their, of the police abusing police of the discretion by really ticketing drivers with items hanging off their rearview mirrors, calling it an obstructed view? That kind of abuse of, of abuse of, of, of the discretion cheapens our culture. Abuse of really abuse of, of, okay, discretion causes harm and hurts our society. I worked in retail sales for decades. One of the most obvious, but never acknowledged attributes of our really clientele and our workforce is their honesty. Retailers will not last very long in a culture where honesty is lacking. Many of the retail outlets have been closed by shoplifters. An even larger number of retails have really perished from, from internal theft. A culture in which even a small number of dishonest people are allowed to exist will always end in failure. And a failure of our retailers hurts our really community. So all leadership, in my opinion, must take steps to keep the system honest. West, West, as an example, West really Minster, has a dedicated group of sales tax auditors keeping retailers honest. Retailers have really lost, okay, I mean, the prevention departments dealing with both internal and external theft. And even the police department has an internal affairs section. But leaders are only responsible to themselves. And how leaders stem abuse of their discretion is most important. They must impose standards on themselves. Remember Al Gore? There is no controlling legal authority that says this was in violation of the law. Gore is talking here about the phone calls he made from the White House soliciting Democrats, Democrat campaign contributions. Now, he clearly can't say, I have broken no laws, because really section 607 of Title 18 of the US Criminal Code states very clearly, there is to be no, I mean, solution of campaign funds in federal government offices. So what does Westminster have to gain from taking ownership of past council's missteps? I say it's better ethical standards. And we need everyone in Westminster to attain the highest ethical standards we can. Westminster, for example, needs quality water chemists that are not afraid to really support samples that have failed. If we let fear keep them silent, we're doing everyone in Westminster a disservice. We need, I mean, the police officers that do not let their emotions or their really desires degrade well their conduct. And there was a former Westminster police officer that was held accountable to the highest standards when he violated those conduct standards. And we need building inspectors and firefighters and recreation leaders. Indeed, we need everyone to strive for the highest ethical standards. And that list especially includes our council. Our council is the only controlling legal authority for councils' abuse of, abuse of discretion. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me. First, I wanted to thank everybody who came out to my Polizzi and Pilsner last Tuesday. We actually had a packed house and we had great conversation, mostly around water and what's happened with the, the, the plan and moving forward and that we have some momentum and we were able to share some good information with the folks who showed up. So if you didn't make it this time, we do it third Tuesday, every single month at Cocapelli Brewing Company from 6:30 to 8:30. Great place to come grab a beer, have some pizza and discuss politics or anything else you want to show up and, and discuss. I want to quickly respond to my colleague. I think the, one of my favorite presidents said, trust but verify. And I think that's a really important thing that, that we have to do in all facets of life. I would agree that an obstructed view does cause damage. And when we work in a obstructed view in our own personal perception and distrust and can't get past that, we are always going to think the worst of whatever we're doing in life. And that was one of the points that I made to Counselor Baker with my response to the, the topic that he wants to discuss. One of the other things that I believe is there has been change over the five years I've been here from the plan for the downtown. And some of that's been less density. It was being called the new urban center. That is no longer being called that because public spoke and council made a shift. Some members of, that made that shift are here, some members are no longer here. So there has been change in that, that plan. I will say that even the mayor knows, I never liked the idea of the city buying the property. However, I wasn't there. So I'm not going to say it was the wrong decision because I might've done the exact same thing. Hindsight is always 2020 and I do not know what I would've done. However, I do know that it was bought, there were decisions that were made and we have to move forward. What is now being done in my mind is we have decisions every time a development comes and a block goes up for sale, that we get to see is the economy driving this decision? Is the market driving this decision? And is it going to be something that's going to actually be successful? And I think that that is something that's going to go on beyond the, the seven of us probably, because that is a 20 to 30 year development. And so we can continue to throw stones at the past and I think it's a waste of time, quite frankly. And, but at some point, we need to move forward. So I think the, the idea of it being a moot point is simply, we can't change the past unless you came up with a time machine. I don't think anybody here is quite that smart. So we need to move forward. And I think that that's the message I've heard from the majority of my colleagues. And I will leave you with that. And again, March 21st, come grab a beer with us at Cocapelli, 6:30.
Counselor Namela?
Thank you. I also just want to appreciate all of the community members that do reach out and meet with me over whatever various issues that are important to you. And I, I always take that feedback and I, I do bring it forward. So I, I appreciate that. But I did want to just briefly respond to Counselor Baker. You know, the, the mall as it was years and years ago was a growing menace at the time. And we had, it was empty and we had disinvestment and an area where not only the mall was suffering, but all the retail around it was suffering. And that in effect also impacted significantly our revenues that were coming in. So at the time, our council made a very brave choice, multiple choices to invest in multiple areas in the city to help bring us revenue sources that would diversify our portfolio, make us more resilient and also open up the opportunity for vision in the downtown area. And when we, when the council, I'm not we, when the council, although it's eventually here at the time, working on city staff towards, towards this vision, now the council made a decision fully knowing that this was going to be, as Mayor Pro Tem said, a 20 to 30 year commitment. And that is what this is. There is a long-term vision and we have invested and made a commitment. And so when we talk about reevaluating our moves every, you know, two years or so with every new council, that does put in question the resilience and the stability of the commitment that we moved into five, you know, in reality about five years ago, right? So I think it's important for us to have that. So I think it's important for us to have that long view, just like we've had a long view on spirit values. Those are 20 years old and they are still holding strong. And it's a commitment to customer service. And here with the downtown, it's a commitment to the vision that we have as a community and for incredibly long term resilience as as a community overall. When this is built out, this will be a place that does also provide us with a revenue source as well as a place to gather and a place to establish community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I too just want to say it's the last two weeks. I sort of forgot last Monday, I kept thinking I had something to go to. And my husband said, just chill. It's a vacation night from council. But a lot have reached out and had conversation over email or called with a whole smorgasbord of things. And what I really enjoy is the people that don't get an answer for whatever reason. And they email back, and I thank them for that because once they email us and we send it on to City Manager Freitag and and I we know he gets it to his team. I know how many emails I get times six. So I'm sure it isn't unusual for something to get buried at one point in time. So what's important, and I tell these people, is if you don't hear back, let us know, but don't wait too long. And they have been calling us back or emailing us back. So I appreciate that so that we can get the answers that you want. Tonight, we have some very special people in our audience, and they're very humble people. So they will say, just leave us alone. But Mayor and Judge Ed Moss is with us. We have counselor, former counselor, Tim Kaufman. And Tim, did you serve as Mayor Protem? I don't remember. Yes, Mayor Protem. And we have former counselor and Mayor Protem, Chris Dittman. We have former parts and rec department head, Bill Wallenzak. And we have former deputy city manager, Steve Smithers. Did I miss anybody that wrote on that? Yes. David Putney, the David Putney. And are you still playing in your band? Are you still playing in the band? Yes. Where where are you at so they can all come and see you? Okay, okay. See him afterwards for a great time because I hear he plays a mean banjo? Trumpo. All right. I knew it was something that I don't play. So anyway, they've all written a letter for an agenda item coming up soon. And I just want to say thank you for being here and taking the time to write the letter and to move it forward through the process that it went through. So thank you.
Consent agenda items eight A through C. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt consent agenda items eight A through eight C.
Counselor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to pass Council Consent Agenda A through C. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to item 10A. Counselor Emmons?
I move to adopt, or excuse me, I move to authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Westminster Public Schools and Adams 12 Five Star Schools to assist with the school district's municipal separate storm sewer system permit complaints.
Mayor Protem? It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10A. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to resolution number seven. Counselor Emmons?
I move to adopt resolution number seven establishing the 2023 calendar year interest rate at 9.5% for non-city funded public improvement recovery contracts and 3.48% for city funded public improvements.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution number seven. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And the motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to item 10C. And I take honor in making this motion of renaming the Westminster City Park to McFall Park for former city manager Jay Brent McFall. Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10C, renaming the city Westminster City Park to McFall Park. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting against this motion. Besides all the excellent things City Manager McFall did, he, in my view, was the main architect of the abuse of the council's discretion in determining what an urban renewal areas. I think he violated the spirit and intent of Colorado law. And then he repeated it multiple times. I think this is a great disservice to the ethics of our really community. And for that reason, I will not be voting in favor of this.
Counselor Emmons?
For me, I will be in favor of this tonight. The data farther outweighs the good versus the bad. So I will be voting for this. But I also want to, as a member growing up in the city and one of the parks that I frequented as a young child, I'll always remember it as Peter Pan Park. But appreciate that we are renaming it, going through the processes to rename it McFall Park.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, the only bad thing I have to say is he stopped the cruising. And yes, I was one of those young people. So I like to say that I was making law before I ever set up here. But with all seriousness, when I first decided to run in 2013 and I asked Mr. McFall if he would hear me because I had no idea what I was doing, he was gracious enough to sit with me for a good hour and answer my questions. And I have to say, you know, the amount of time that he's been gone, the fact that he and and former city manager Bill Christopher spent a good amount of time coming back to help us with the water situation, I think just shows the dedication that each of those men have to the city and the really the debt of gratitude that the city has to both of them. So I'm glad that he gets to join the ranks. He didn't get a ballpark like like Mr. Christopher, but I'm glad that we can honor him and his service to the city.
Counselor Nermella?
I will be voting in favor of of this. I just want to say I had the pleasure of being able to work under Brett McFall's leadership. And, you know, and actually, my my first desk overlooked this park all day long. And I got to see how many, you know, how many residents were able to enjoy this park and continue to enjoy this park, you know. And Brett McFall fostered a group of people that really led the vision for the community. And, you know, like John Carpenter, as the community development director, really had a strong role in shaping the park as well and and the city overall. And I just really appreciate what and this, the whole team that he put together did for the community. So thanks.
And I don't know, Steve, was it three years that Bernice would stand up here and tell us about that vacant land that was out there that Brent's office faced? And it had hills and mounds and with the apartments and the homes starting to be built, everybody used it as a free form dog park. But she called it poop park. And so I better know it as poop park. So when all of this came up, I jokingly said to him, I don't know, maybe the word poop should be in there somewhere. But I promised him maybe it would be. But anyway, you know, Mr. Baker, I couldn't disagree more because transparency, I can take any developer today from 2000, from when I got on in 2001 and we started our strategic plan to when I left in 2013. And not many people get to go over that period of time. But I can start in South Westminster and move up to far north, go west, stay in the central area, wherever I am, and take that strategic plan piece by piece. And it takes three hours to explain each piece that was put into place with his vision and the and the staff that he had to put this city into a sustainable arena that was sustainable through a pandemic, and it was proven. So to say anything else than that man had great ethics. He he ran, he did everything by that strategic plan. There was a vision and we moved on it. That's about as transparent as you can get. So I will be voting for that and roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six one vote. And again, thank you, guys. That brings it to item 10D. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Moved based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest would be best served by ratifying a sole source vendor purchase associated with the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus and self-contained underwater breathing apparatus made in 2022 with Municipal Emergency Services, Inc., not to exceed $90,737.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10D. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. Attorney Frankel, do we want to do our executive session?
Yes, Mayor. Following our two post-meeting agenda items, there is an agenda item for an executive session. It is an exec session discussion of a personnel matter, quarterly check-ins on the annual review process specific to the city manager, city attorney, and presiding judge pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C1 and Colorado revised statute 2464024F1.
I will ask each counselor to, well, I'll state your name and you state whether you're willing to go into executive session and that you will hold things that you said there in confidentiality. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor Nancy, yes. Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, so we-
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, and this is off topic, but I just got word that there is a planning commission meeting tomorrow. Just wanted to clarify it for the record. So it's not canceled for tomorrow. The one on 3/28 is canceled, but tomorrow's is happening.
Okay, thank you. We'll hope it's quick so they can get to the meet the candidates. All right, we will take a quick five or 10 minute break so we can say hello to our guests here tonight. And we'll move in to our post-meeting. Thank you, everyone.
That's correct. Per an agreement with the parties in Jefferson County that's separate from the intergovernmental agreement we pay towards the debt service that built the shelter. That's correct.
And then weren't we paying like an additional $100,000?
Um, that's, do you mean the assessment?
Uh, we were paying something for capital cost. We were paying something for operation and then the licenses added a little bit more.
That's, yes, sir. That's correct.
So really, well, the total funding now is that not that much different than the total funding was before, except for the $70,000 the few compliant dog owners were paying while the rest of the population was just riding.
That's correct. The difference is the $70,000 that won't be generated from the licenses.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there other cities that don't require licensing and is the, you know, the $70,000 that part of a commitment we've made to the animal shelter pay beyond the, um, the debt service and the, and the operations?
Other jurisdictions?
So I would say the biggest jurisdiction that doesn't license is city authority. They do not require it. They get away with their licensing probably about 10 years ago because it wasn't beneficial to them. And it doesn't even go towards their shelter. So it was just for their city. As far as there are some other smaller ones that don't, and then there's a couple of counties that don't.
In terms of the, um, in terms of the contributions, as a, as a member of the intergovernmental agreement, which council approved the amended intergovernmental agreement with the animal shelter last year, we are obligated to pay into the operations. And then the, essentially the equation is, you know, the, the amount that is brought in by dog licenses and then the amount that your assessment is comprises the entire portion that each jurisdiction paid then, that amount. And that was done to, to encourage higher compliance with dog licenses with our jurisdictions.
So we have to, for this next budget round, we have to find a 70K to...
Basically identified that for 2023 as part of the budget process and the strategic plan. So that's built in moving forward.
How are we going to really mechanically move to that? Cause I would imagine that dog licenses were an annual kind of thing and the people got a notice in the mail to renew. Or is that just the way we're implementing this? So got a thing in the mail saying, you don't need it anymore. Thanks for paying. You were one of the good guys.
Yes, ma'am. Hard to interrupt, but can, can I add to that? Because being a dog owner, I know that's also when they remind you about the vaccination. So do you, is, will there still be a notification of that in addition to his question?
One thing on the vaccination, so in Colorado, you're only required to vaccinate your first time and then after your first time, it's a three-year. So that's not even in line with our licensing program. So, and you'll get a notice from your veterinarian.
So presently we do online and paper renewals. So we would work with the city of Westminster to craft language. And I think the best way to do that would be to send everyone a notice that, you know, your city has decided that to move away from this licensing. I think that there will be some folks that have licensed for years that may still want to license. We would provide that at no charge. The, also the, the tag part of this is a permanent tag. So they don't get a new tag every year. You get one tag for the life of your dog. So I believe that the messaging to your citizens could be handled by those renewals. We also presently require licensing for anyone that adopts from any one of the cities in Jefferson County that requires licensing. So we would stop that. We could also, and Kelly and I were talking about what other forms of identification, because identification is important and the license is a challenge as well because it doesn't say the owner's name, information, phone number. It just has a Jefferson County tag number and you have to have a way. So for instance, it's 10 o'clock at night, you find a stray dog. How are you gonna, how, how is this helpful? So there are other ways that would be much more helpful. For instance, a, a tag that has your name and your pet's name and a phone number. We have two of those machines. We could even do something as a public service to the city of Westminster. As we announce this change, come and make your own tag. I mean, that would be something that might be fun. So those, that would be, I think, would behoove us all to do that. Presently, and the other part of this is, we have continued to accept city of Westminster residents, their licenses now, and they've been paying for them. So we'd have to talk about whether we're going to offer refunds or is this going to be moving forward because, you know, the, the calendar year started and we had, we knew that the city of Westminster wanted to make this free for all your residents, but we were struggling with trying to figure out how to do so with our software. And our software won't allow some to be free. So we were kind of bound with that. And then how are we going to bill you? And then it was going to become a process of repayment and payment. And it was, it was getting really confusing for all of us. And I think we're all in agreement that what we believe licensing was going to do isn't doing it. And I've worked in animal welfare for over 40 years and it's never worked.
We get more animals on by social media, seriously.
Well, and I will need to contact vets because I know whenever Gibbs is in, they'll always say, do you want us to go ahead and send in his tags to the shelter? So to get that. And so they offer that. We just need him to check.
Yes, we have about 30 veterinarians all over Jefferson County that do sell licenses and we can just, we'll let them know too, that Westminster citizens won't be required anymore.
Our magic will just let, giving that peace of mind to a lot of people.
Thank you. And I never use the word free, so it's included.
So is everybody okay? I haven't heard any negatives. Good job. Thanks for being here. Say hi to all, all my little furry friends. It's one place I could never work. My husband would know I would fill each step of my house.
Would be over limit, you say?
She'd have to move way up.
By 300, right?
And if I ever tried to change that number, you pay you to vote no.
Mayor, this has been a topic that, you know, I'm sure predating my arrival, but I know when I arrived back in October, this was something that a lot of the council members spoke to me about. And that was, you know, what are the city's, you know, options for, you know, essentially making penalties or parameters regarding car thefts, parts thefts, speeding and other vehicle related issues, you know, bring that back to the council with some recommendations. And so the city attorney Frankel and his team have looked at the legal aspects of this. We have certainly police department individuals here that can assist in any current question. I'll turn it over to the city attorney Frankel and let him and his team run with this.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. And let me also thank Brian Fusle, who's here at the end of the table. He's our lead prosecutor and Mark Brostrm, who's an assistant prosecuting attorney for the city. Not present tonight is Mark Hoff, who's ill. I think Mark is listening in at home. So if we say something with which he strongly disagrees, I've asked him to text us all so he can warm up his thumbs for that. But yes, to Mr. Freitag's point, the city attorney's office has been working on some proposed code updates for council consideration in, along the same lines as previous code updates from the last year, which have included the median safety ordinance, the ability to summarily abate graffiti, the jurisdictional limits of theft and criminal mischief having been raised last year, rewriting the animal code last year, addressing property retention issues which have come up in homeless encampments and in our efforts to remediate those. We've also proposed and council has adopted changes regarding default judgments, court processes and administrative fees for code enforcement matters. So tonight, we're here to talk to you about auto theft and in just general terms, catalytic converter theft, which has been on a lot of people's minds, and street racing, which has been on a lot of people's minds. And so these are challenges that other jurisdictions have dealt with and are also addressing and through their codes. And we have appreciated the input of our police partners and also the courts. Appreciate the judge being here this evening because when we draft code, we want to run it by all the people who are impacted by the code that's proposed. So we definitely appreciate the, the, the eyes on and the suggestions that we've received back. And these are drafts right now. And the drafts are intended to provide local solutions to these problems, which are at times written into county courts, but perhaps not dealt with as quickly as we can locally. They are dealt with in places that are more remote than our municipal court is. So we would have witnesses and victims having to travel up to Brighton to go to the Adams County Courts or into Golden to be in the Jefferson County Court. So we find there's definitely value here to having as many local options to address these issues. And I think we, we have an opportunity here to be responsive in ways, also to address recent legislative changes, which have reduced penalties on several offenses and now, you know, provide perhaps an opportunity for us to regulate in those areas and address those concerns. So I would ask that Mr. Fusle and Mr. Brostrm basically take us through the proposed language that's been attached to tonight's agenda. And, you know, these are, these are ideas. They're not in their final form yet. And I understand, you know, Mr. Brostrm, even tonight has been, you know, reviewing and spotting things that can be improved. So these are drafts, they're works in progress. And I would just ask, walk us through them and explain, you know, what possible value these new code provisions could provide.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Frankel. I want to again thank Mark Hoff, who's not here. He's really spearheaded this project so far, coordinated meetings. We had a meeting where we consulted with an attorney from Denver who walked us through their paradigm for the fourth ordinance that we'll go over here, the motor vehicle closure ordinance. It's kind of, you can think of it like a nuisance abatement ordinance applied to vehicles rather than real estate. So thank you to Mark, because he's been instrumental in leading this effort so far. So we're here to talk about four different ideas for ordinance updates we have. The first three are relatively simple and straightforward. So I'm happy to field any questions as we go through those. I'll start with motor vehicle theft. Currently, you know, we have a theft ordinance in the city of Westminster that doesn't specify what kind of property that that ordinance can be used for, but we do have a jurisdictional limit on the theft value. We recently raised it to $1,000. And so as you can imagine, most of the vehicles that are stolen in the city of Westminster are above that value threshold. So we don't really have an opportunity to use our theft ordinance, generally speaking, for motor vehicle theft. The language of motor vehicle draft, do you recall where we, where we got this language from? You know, one thing I'll, that I'll, I'll be upfront about is in the, in the legal field, when you're writing something new, if there's already something out there and it's been challenged and it's been found to, to be good law, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. Do you recall where we got the language? Okay, thank you. And I believe the draft, as it's been presented to council, tracks word for word Denver statute or Denver's code. It's been tested, so there aren't any concerns or, you know, about risk or liability or concerns about the language of this code being challenged. All of these drafts were put together in consultation with our police department and Chief Halbert specifically. They did a, you know, before you, you add something new to the code like this, one of the things you want to understand is what impact that's going to have on your municipal court, on the caseload, whether it's for the court staff processing it or prosecutors handling those cases. And we believe that there's the potential on this motor vehicle theft code of adding 50 to 70 cases to our municipal court's caseload per year. You know, depending on the year, we have anywhere between eight to 12 or 13,000 cases coming through our municipal court. So 50 to 70 isn't going to break anything, probably wouldn't even be noticed. In, in actuality, the number's probably going to be less than 50 to 70. When you plan for things like this, you want to plan for the larger number. That's what we think we would add is, is potentially 50 to 70, but in reality, probably fewer than 50 to 70 cases to our court's docket over the course of a year. And so, Mr. Regal, did you want me to go through the actual language or just?
I would just add, thank you, Mr. Hoff, for, for listening and texting. Mr. Hoff indicates that the Aurora code is also informed this draft. So there are both Denver and Aurora components that are proposed in the motor vehicle theft ordinance. And I would just ask, you know, that, you know, clearly auto theft is something, you know, that occurs and the police are writing into county courts and even potentially district courts.
Yes.
So what would change if there were to be a local ordinance adopted addressing auto theft?
So I would say two things. One is some of what you already identified. And in the memo for all of these codes, there are three points under anticipated benefits. And those are the three points that we'd kind of say for any of our criminal charges in the city of Westminster. And it's convenience, efficiency and expedience. When I say convenience, that's what Mr. Frankel touched on as far as physical proximity to where the crime occurs. It's more convenient for both defendants and victims and witnesses to come to our municipal court, you know, take a, take a 10-minute bus ride down federal or, you know, drive 15 minutes across town to get to our courthouse versus going out to Brighton or Golden. And so it's, it's more convenient for victims, witnesses and the defendants. It's more convenient for our police officers to come to our municipal court to testify. We, we communicate with them much more thoroughly than they get from the DA's offices. We have an on-call system so that we're not bringing down 10 different officers for three different court trials when it turns out two of those don't end up going and we've now wasted their time. So that's what I mean when I say convenience, efficiency. Well, I'll, I'll go to expediency because that's identified next. Generally speaking, our cases move quicker from start to finish in municipal court versus in county court or district court. Our speedy trial deadline is 91 days versus six months in county court or district court. And, and for all kinds of other reasons, we just, we move quicker. That's one of the goals and designs of municipal court. And the last, what I'll say is, you know, locality and, and having a nexus to where the crime is committed and that local area gives us the ability in municipal court, I think, to be a bit more responsive to our community's desires and needs than in county court and district court. The city of Westminster may feel differently about certain crimes. And I'll just pull a random one out of the top of my head, graffiti. We may feel differently about graffiti than other cities or than the counties or than the state as a whole. And so getting feedback from council, dealing with local issues, we may respond to those issues in a different way than a prosecutor and a judge and a defense attorney may in either county court, district court or, or state court, generally speaking. Those are the three benefits I see that would really apply to any of our criminal charges, but certainly these criminal charges. It also gives us the ability to prosecute these cases with the values that, that, you know, as the state legislature changes a penalty and, and changes a crime from a felony down to a misdemeanor, that now gives the city of Westminster the ability to have jurisdiction to prosecute that crime. And again, we can prosecute that crime as it fits the needs, desires and values of the city of Westminster compared to a different jurisdiction.
And I would just add for council's benefit, so there are clearly aggravated cases of auto theft. Those aggravated cases would continue to be written into district court.
Yes.
Those would be beyond our jurisdictional limits. So understand that there are, we're, we're not talking about prosecuting all auto thefts locally, but these likely be the non-aggravated cases.
Yeah, they would, they would be the cases that don't meet the aggravated value threshold to turn them into a felony. And so we would, you know, we probably wouldn't have a lot of Ferraris, you know, auto thefts coming into our municipal court, but it would raise our jurisdictional limit away from the $1,000 for the theft. And off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the felony limit for auto, for aggravated auto, motor vehicle theft is.
Well, that, and that's something that will be coming up in, in our drafting because there's a disagreement in terms of application. Denver and Aurora both view the value of the vehicle as not a felony aggravator. There's a series of other aggravators, state statute, which do work to move it into a felony. And so they view those separately. Mark Hoff and I in our work on this have not quite decided whether we agree with that assessment. We think it's an important one, but certainly we know that the goal is going to be having kind of the more, the less aggravated cases. And if I might just add one thing to what Brian said, often, or maybe not often, but auto theft is a place where you get serial offenders. And they'll have multiple cases and having a case in the Westminster municipal court often is the way we are able to secure restitution for our Westminster resident. You get it over to district court, you have a collection of cases and suddenly they're looking at resolving all of this because you have one offender. We have the same one offender, except we usually have a local. And so I do think that we, having a, a local ability to respond to the, really the, what motor vehicle theft does to its victims.
I think so. It was just how, since we're leaning on Denver and their county, how did that play into effect at a municipal level? But I think, I think we got there as far as the benefits on how we'll prosecute at the local level, but that, excuse me, aggravated will still go above our level.
That's correct. And, and it would either go to the Jefferson County District Court or the...
Okay.
Another thing to be aware of with respect to auto theft is that the legislature may well take action to declare all auto theft as felony. And I think if they did, we would lose our ability to handle these locally. So that I think is something just to be aware of in the changing legislative climate, that that is a possibility with regard.
That's correct. In, in any of our municipal criminal codes, if, if there's a corollary felony that could be prosecuted in district court, we're precluded from having jurisdiction over those cases. So if the state legislature made all of the thefts felonies, we would no longer be able to prosecute those.
Council Baker? Yeah, well, my question was, because it was my understanding, you wanted to make everything a felony. So you answered that. But my curiosity was, how often do we get restitution?
Well, that's a challenging question to answer. I, I can easily answer, how often does the court order restitution? But that's not the same thing you're asking. And to answer that question, one of the things we look at when we're prosecuting cases, whether it's a dog case where there's restitution, a theft case where there's restitution, an auto theft case, you know, we value restitution pretty highly because, you know, we can penalize somebody and sometimes justice calls for that, but one of the ways you can make somebody old is by getting them that restitution paid. If there were restitution that were, and restitution's also a relatively narrow thing a court can order as compared to other amounts that people owe in the legal field. So you can't do pain and suffering, you can't do emotional distress, things like that for restitution. When restitution, when, when the need for restitution to be ordered exists, it gets ordered in the vast majority of cases. Now, how often does it get paid? There, there are two mechanisms. Um, there, there are two mechanisms we have to collect restitution. The first is depends on what somebody's sentence was. If they were sentenced to probation and one of the terms of their probation is payment of restitution, if they don't pay the restitution, we file a motion to revoke their probation and then they can be resentenced to anything allowed by law. So, uh, and anything allowed by law in the city of Westminster is a fine of up to two thousand six hundred fifty dollars and up to three hundred and sixty-four days in jail. So the threat of potential punishment is usually what motivates people to actually pay that restitution. I often have to, uh, unfortunately explain to people, we, we don't have the ability to squeeze money out of somebody, but what we can do is use that potential penalty to motivate them to pay the restitution. That's one mechanism. Now, sometimes restitution is ordered when people are not placed on probation. And, uh, if they don't pay that restitution, it then goes to collections. And, uh, you know, paychecks are garnished, uh, tax returns are garnished, and that's the other mechanism for collecting restitution. Uh, we, we could also use restitution as a kind of bargaining chip in negotiations. So sometimes we will negotiate and give some other concession. You know, maybe instead of a year of probation, we give six months probation if they're able to pay the restitution upfront.
Could you give me a ballpark? Because it's my preconceived notion, most of people stealing cars are doing it for a business or our young people have no money.
That, that may be true. When you ask ballpark or you ask them for ballpark on maybe the percentage rate of.
Unlike of the, because it changes if it's going to be a felony because we won't do it anymore. But of the hundred cases of car theft we did in Westminster as misdemeanors, ten got restitution.
Um, well, so we haven't started doing them yet in, in Westminster. Well, I, I, we, we may have had one come through, but remember, it, in, in the past, it would have to be, well, and, and since we recently changed the theft value to a thousand, it used to be five hundred. So unless we had a case where a vehicle is worth less than five hundred dollars, we didn't see that auto theft case. I, I can't think off, off the top of my head.
I don't believe in auto theft cases in our office.
So.
So we don't have to worry that much about restitution.
Well, we, we haven't so far. And, and in the future, the, the restitution, if somebody gets their vehicle back, then the restitution would be for any other out-of-pocket expenses they had. Unless I suppose there was damage done to the vehicle, which is certainly not uncommon. But we don't have a track record that I can explain to you of, of how many we have. Thank you.
So the next proposal is the theft of auto parts. So this was driven by another issue of catalytic converter theft. But before I do that, questions regarding auto theft?
Well, this might apply to other, uh, suggested ordinances as well. Um, if you could speak to, you know, if there is this potential for a, um, or, you know, requirement or creation of like, um, you know, just turning into a felony versus, um, my God.
Misbehavior.
Misbehavior, thank you, sorry. Um, is there a ramp up of implementation internally within our office? Where we would have to kind of learn something new and spend a lot of time on that? Or is this something we could just absorb? That would be just something for any of you?
Sure. So, so, uh, i- if, let, let's say, you know, six months from now, the state legislature makes them all felonies. It's not a lot of work or problematic for us to, the first thing we do is simply communicate with the police department. The police department would know this was coming well in advance. Uh, and rather than, you know, a- a- as soon as that happened, they would simply file that charge into state court instead of municipal court. Um, that, that's a very easy change to make. Um, that should not be problematic other than training, making sure all the officers are familiar with that and aware of that. And of course, if we saw an auto theft case come to our municipal court after the state had made it a felony, we, we would immediately catch that and know how to handle that. It would not be an emergency for us to get auto theft off our books if it became a felony as long as we weren't prosecuting that charge without jurisdiction in our municipal court. So if the concern is at some point in your future, the legislature might make this change, i- it's not problematic for us to kind of undo this ordinance if we do decide to adopt it.
Sorry, I asked my question horribly. Um, if, is there a training that would, would be required to ramp up to accommodating the, the auto theft? And therefore, would it kind of, I'm just trying to understand, like, would we waste our time?
Sure. I mean, I, I don't want to speak too much for the police department, but I think the short answer to your question is no. There's not much training as far as the court staff and the prosecutor's office. I mean, the court staff would need to enter a new charge into their system, but that's pretty common. Prosecutors, I mean, th- there's nothing different about this ordinance that we would need new training or new techniques or anything like that. And I, I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, because the police are already investigating these cases, the question is just where do they go? And so I, I think the training from the police department's perspective would be relatively minimal, just sending them to us instead of into state court. And, and the police department is constantly, they, they have flow charts on where charges go and, and things like that. So that's something that they're pretty, um, pretty fluent in.
I don't see any more hands, sorry.
Okay. Uh, the second proposal is for removal of motor vehicle parts. And this is, uh, intended to address concerns about, that include catalytic converter theft. Um, and having a local charge of motor vehicle part removal, uh, would also provide us the similar benefits, I think, that, uh, have been described as far as automotive theft. Um, and allow us to, up to our, um, jurisdictional limits, charge for theft of parts. What, what might, um, the city experience with this being added to our code?
So I don't have, um, I don't have a number or an estimate like I do for the auto theft. Uh, but I, I think, I don't think I'm going too far out on a limb to say that it's not going to be a number of cases that would break anything. I, I don't think we would notice it, frankly. It may even be, be fewer than what we estimate for the auto theft. Um, you know, all, all the pros and cons that we've already discussed for auto theft will also apply to this, uh, theft or removal, I, I should say, removal of motor vehicle parts. Uh, the only additional comment I'll make is the way this draft is written, um, one of the things we have to do with theft is prove somebody's intent to permanently deprive somebody else. Uh, the removal of motor vehicle parts, we don't have to quite prove that same intent. What we would have to prove is that one person unlawfully removed a part of a motor vehicle and they did not have the authorization from the owner. It just makes it a little bit easier to prove the elements of the crime because we don't have to prove that somebody had the intent to permanently deprive. We just have to prove that they didn't have permission from the owner. And, and what that takes is the owner shows up and judge swears him in and they say, "That person did not have my, uh, approval or authority or permission to remove that auto, uh, part." So it's, it's a little bit easier to deal with than, uh, a normal theft charge. Uh, but basically everything else, we already discussed about the benefits of being able to prosecute these cases locally would also apply to this removal of motor vehicle parts ordinance.
This is also designed to somewhat capture the fact that we are more likely to find an incident where there's evidence that someone has parts. And then we may have the circumstances to show that they are stolen parts. We come across that circumstance and it's hard to prosecute because whether it's a theft means connecting it for directly to a vehicle, this makes the possession of the part, uh, the crime. Uh, and so by virtue of doing it that way, we, we will have a better avenue towards prosecuting cases. They will still present evidential challenges. So this is certainly a place where we don't expect to see tons of cases. Um, but we have seen circumstances that we would have certainly enjoyed having an opportunity to address.
If no other questions on parts or, sorry, go ahead.
Possession of a stolen part, how does, how do you know that?
Well, that's, I, it's always going to be very contextual. Uh, it, it's really hard for me to answer a question of how would you prove something? Because in many cases you'll see, uh, you might end up having an informant who's available, so we might have a witness. We may actually have the part, we may charge this in a situation where we can otherwise prove a theft, but, uh, catalytic converters are very valuable and so this doesn't have the issue of kind of exceeding our theft limit. So it might give us an opportunity to prosecute a, a local problem that is, um, may exceed that theft limit. Uh, so it, it, this gives it, just kind of opens another door. Uh, it's very similar and kind of adjacent to how we've been approaching theft. But the question of how would we prove it? The answer is we'd have to be able to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. And that would include the circumstances that it is a stolen item. And so, uh, we, we certainly wouldn't, um, we wouldn't let, allow a case to proceed in courtroom without having a firm belief that we'd be able to, uh, show that to a judge or jury.
How many of these do we do now?
Uh, none that I'm aware of.
Motor vehicle trespass is the third charge that we are proposing for the code. And this is a charge that the state recently, I, I understand, reduced the penalty. Correct. Yeah. So the state had reduced this from a felony level offense to a misdemeanor, thus creating an opportunity for cities like Westminster to regulate these offenses locally. So motor vehicle trespass, similar benefits. Um, and, you know, to having a local charge and ability to address this as an issue to our community. Um, do you, um, in your discussions with Mr. Hoff, have, um, anything you'd add regarding motor vehicle trespass?
Well, I, I would say, um, motor, you can kind of view motor vehicle trespass, this draft, and the motor vehicle theft as kind of complementary to each other or, or sort of trying to attack the same problem from different angles. What's very, very common is, uh, police contact and find somebody inside, whether they're a passenger or a driver, of a stolen motor vehicle. And what's very common is they give some explanation about, "Well, I borrowed from my cousin and they got it from here." And what's very difficult is to prove that that person that is found in the stolen vehicle stole that motor vehicle. What we often can prove, uh, is that they are in that vehicle without permission from the owner and there's evidence that they have the intent to commit some other crime. Uh, you know, the rare exception to a motor vehicle theft or something like that, um, well, for motor vehicle trespass even, is we find somebody in a vehicle and something extreme would have to exist for us to be able to charge them without this draft. Like, for example, you can only start and drive the vehicle with a screwdriver. Well, i- i- most reasonable people, even if they borrow it from their cousin, if they have to start with a screwdriver, they should suspect that vehicle may be stolen. What this draft allows us to do is prosecute cases where we cannot prove who stole the vehicle. We can prove it was stolen, but we can't prove, prove who stole it or that this particular person who was found in it stole it. But we can prove that they're in it, they don't have authorization from the owner, and they have the intent to commit some other crime. Uh, Mayor Portem?
So getting to that season, playing countryside, people start rifling through people's cars that are open. I imagine this will help, um, those situations if you're able to catch somebody in that or prove who they are. I mean, certainly has unfortunately happened to us, car got left unlocked and kids went through it and stole a bunch of stuff. You know, with video, I know that's hard sometimes to prove it, but will this help us?
Yes, absolutely. And, and that, that leads me to believe, uh, remember another example that we encounter pretty frequently uh, at the frustration of our police department, which is they find a stolen vehicle, they, uh, test for DNA, they test for fingerprints, and they find somebody's, you know, fingerprints and DNA all over the vehicle. They can even identify that person. What that will allow us to do, generally speaking, is prosecute those cases. Uh, currently, what, what the city prosecutor's office response to the police department has been is that without additional facts beyond simply having somebody's fingerprints and/or DNA in a vehicle, we're not able to prosecute that case because I can't prove that that person had any awareness or knowledge that vehicle was or might be stolen. Now, th- this, the language of this draft may allow us to prosecute more of those cases, uh, and especially the cases that you just, the example you just gave, which, wh- when you find somebody rifling through a vehicle, it's easy to prove that they did the intent to commit some other crime. They're, they're looking for something valuable, right?
Mayor Portem, I'd also add that our current trespass ordinance, i- it's, it's a typical one, but it says when, and hit, when permission is not present, you know, kind of more involved way. This says that you don't have permission to be in other people's cars, okay? And so that, that's just, that just solves one of the initial problems because in the circumstance you described, let's say they don't find anything valuable in your car, but you catch them. Uh, but we can't prove a, necessarily a theft because we'll get all kinds of absurd kind of what they were doing in the car unless we find the thing in their pocket. Um, but we know they're in the car, we know that they're, the circumstances show the intent. We can go forward with that case better under this circumstance, under our kind of more broad-based trespass.
Well, just by view, that's what I would, we started talking about these kind of things. Those are the kind of things I was hoping for, just like enforcing parking on Sims at the dog park. Word starts getting out that, you know, in Westminster, this is how it's handled, much like in the past graffiti. So I'm glad to hear that because I know, um, and I'm sure my neighborhood's not alone, but countryside, I don't know if it's just because it's hard to get around or what, but the, it's usually kids, but they get into the car, especially when it's nice out. As soon as it starts getting warm, you know, if you don't have your car locked, you're going to get all your change stolen. So I'm glad to hear that it will help that.
What's change?
They don't know what it is. Where's my bin map?
Councilor Isati?
Thank you for the info. This last one, um, so first, some clarification, right? So the, the current state bill that may pass this session does not make all motor vehicle theft felonies because it establishes a new misdemeanor, last one misdemeanor, which is when you have a, um, someone who's in, so who's using a car with, without authorization. One, they're not committing, there's no evidence that they're committing some other crime, and police either retain the car or they return the car within twenty-four hours. They're going to call that a misdemeanor. That, that's a new misdemeanor. How does that connect with this? How would, yeah, so what's the?
So, so I, I would say they don't. And in, in a way, um, they, they kind of don't interact. So, uh, there are a lot, the vast majority of crimes, according to our city code, are also crimes according to state law. We've made the policy decision that basically anything that can come to municipal court should. And so we, we send those charges to municipal court, uh, for all these, the, the, some of the reasons we've already discussed. The, the only, and the reason I don't think the two interact is because if, if we have different wording or they have certain requirements for what's a misdemeanor charge versus a felony charge, uh, the way the law works for municipal criminal charges compared to state criminal charges is what, and, and it's kind of the short version, but if something's a felony, we can't prosecute it. If something's a misdemeanor, we can. And the fact that our misdemeanor may be different from the state misdemeanor, uh, doesn't mean that they interact in any way. Does that answer your question? I mean, we, we may have different definitions or different, uh, different conditions that exist to satisfy our municipal code compared to the state misdemeanor charge. The fact that they're different is not problematic and they, and they really don't interact at all. Now, there may be some differences in what has to be proven in county court for that misdemeanor versus in our municipal court, but there's really no interaction between the two.
So in that example where someone is found in the car without authorization, how wouldn't that, that is indirect? So what if he's returning that car?
Well, so.
Within twenty-four hours?
Sure.
So which, which law takes?
Well, if, if, i- i- it sounds like you're asking what's kind of an evidentiary question. So the way this, uh, code is drafted, we have to prove that they were in the car without permission from the owner and that they had the intent to commit some other crime. So if we can't prove that they had the intent to commit some other crime, and, and I've seen it before. I've seen cases where somebody got into a vehicle, eh, for warmth on, on a cold night and they didn't have the intent to commit some other crime. It, it does happen. Uh, if, if we had that scenario, that wouldn't be a case that would get filed in municipal.
Okay, so you're saying, so that's the difference, right? The intent.
Yeah, yes, yes. That, that may be the answer to your question, yes.
Well, my question is, why do you want to add the intent? The elements to prove, uh, trespass of a car?
Well, I think that, uh, we have historically used the other trespass. Um, in terms of why, I, you know, I, I can, I've got to, got to live it and understand. No, I, we, we have a trespass ordinance and we have had many cases filed in the municipal court where people who are passengers in a car, otherwise in a circumstance, as Mr. Fissley has described, um, were charged. We've just found that i- it's a difficult fit because some of the things that are predictably there when you're talking about perhaps a, a residence or an establishment, kind of go away when the people who own it aren't present. And so you have the car and the circumstances. And so, um, the broad reason for this is that the, with the intent to commit a, um, And so, the broad reason for this is that, the, with the intent to commit a, another crime thereon, I think that's a fair question, and I think that's exactly why we're here to talk. Certainly, we could approach this with, with something less. This would be kind of, this is more consistent with kind of maybe the state burglary charge. Well, we're trying to say that the re, what we're mad at here is not just entering the car, but entering the car with a particular crime, with, to take the whatever's valuable inside, as opposed to just to differentiate it from someone maybe seeking warmth, not why we want to encourage it. So I think the question you're asking is one that we certainly could look at more carefully and look at what it would do in terms of like, how many more cases we'd receive if we removed this intent. I'm certain that this intent requirement will dramatically reduce the number of cases we have heard, and if we went the other direction, obviously more, policy questions then kind of come from there.
And, and that's all accurate. Additionally, the challenge we have with motor vehicle theft compared to motor vehicle trespass is, for motor vehicle theft, we have to prove somebody had the intent and did steal the vehicle. The motor vehicle trespass, and the reason they're kind of complementary, or trying to attack the same problem from different angles, is we always have to prove some sort of mental state in proving a crime. The, the, the exception to that are what are called strict liability crimes, but that's kind of unrelated to what we're talking about here. For motor vehicle theft, we have to prove that they knowingly exercised control and stole a vehicle. For motor vehicle trespass, we have to prove, not that they knowingly trespassed in the vehicle, although we can almost always prove that, we have to, the, the necessary mental state we have to prove is that they had the intent to commit another crime therein, which is much easier to prove than proving that they knowingly exercised control over or stole the vehicle. So it's actually, it's a lower threshold, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, pardon. He just told someone. You know, so, this is kind of, we have a battery in a harassment ordinance, and even though everything in municipal court shares kind of a scheme, we view one as more serious than the other. So that's, this is a situation where I think there was some intent to create a statute that addressed a more serious crime. And so, that is why that intent element's there, because when we can satisfy each of these, our response will be proportionate.
Counselor Bakers, to your question. Jason Montine, municipal judge. Another angle on this is the fact that if there's no state equivalent misdemeanor to the municipal charge, then the court cannot impose a bond, and in many cases, there cannot be an arrest, summons-only offense, particularly given some current legislation that's out there. So by tailoring a charge similarly to the state statute, it allows the court to set bond and for that to be an arrestable offense as opposed to a summons-only mandatory personal recognizance bond. And so, in the instance of a motor vehicle trespass that tracks more the state statute, because there's that state equivalent, the court would be able to set secured bond conditions, things of that nature, as opposed to it being a mandatory personal recognizance bond. So that's just another consideration.
Well, from my point of view, I thought the whole thing was to have fewer out-of-that.
Well, that, that's.
Now, I understand by adding intent, we have fewer cases, but that's the judge's problem. Our problem is how many cars get stolen. And if we have a, if we have a trespass law that's, see, because proving the guy driving the car stole it's really hard, right?
Yes, it can be, yes.
Okay, so if we have a, a trespass, you're in a car that's not yours without the owner's okay permission, even if we have to give them PR bonds, that becomes an immediate disincentive. Really, would this really help, would this help our officers on the road?
The, the way it's currently worded?
No, well, I'm talking to the polit, because I'm sure they must stop people in stolen cars, but they can't prove the guy stole it, they have no idea what his intent was, I mean, juveniles joyriding.
You're, you're exactly right, Mr. Baker. Dean Zalano, I'm in for, for Chief Hopper. You're exactly right. The, it, it's exactly what you're saying the frustrations are, but the reality of not being able to arrest somebody or putting bond on somebody, it really negates what we're doing, trying to, to put some bite into the teeth of this, of this, of this law that we're trying to create. The question is, do you want to have the intent? I think, I think that's a very great, very good question. I think there's a lot of good conversations that could happen about it, but there's, not being able to have bond and not be able to arrest somebody, I think that does play into it. But you are correct. Joyriding is a perfect example of that. Stolen cars where the driver takes off running and you have five kids left in the car, they sit there and there's nothing that we can do with them but call parents.
Right, right. And if you had a criminal trespass, that would then give them an incentive to rat out the creep who stole the car.
It's, it's true. And even in this situation, a lot of those kids will even admit that they knew the car was stolen, but they weren't in control of it.
Right.
So, they could be charged in this.
And we want fewer stolen cars. So even if we give up hauling them off to jail someplace, which may or may not take them, depending on their mood that day, it's going to, I think your word on the street is going to get around that, geez, there are a bunch of jerks up in Westminster. So, I wouldn't want to add the intent.
And that's something we can take a look at. My, my, my first reaction, when I think through removing that intent, is it would become a strict liability crime. And what's challenging is, strict liability means essentially, if you're in the car and you're stolen, you're guilty of that crime. It doesn't matter what you knew, what you thought, et cetera. And we'd want to make sure that a strict liability trespass would, you know, pass constitutional muster, because you, you may be able to imagine, we, we can easily come up with scenarios where everybody knows the car is stolen. It's just as easy to come up with scenarios where there might be a plausible reason that somebody was riding in a vehicle and had no reason to think it was stolen, and the constitution may protect that person, so that's something we'd have to take a look at.
But also, don't we have very bright prosecutors and very smart judges?
Of the best.
So, it doesn't have to care though, does it?
Well, I mean, i- i- as long.
I was going to say, we're not going to charge you with this, but don't do it again.
I- i- as long as the, as long as the code as we drafted, if council approves it and adopts it, you know, passes constitutional challenge.
If I could, Mr. Hoff's been offering some bits that I'd like to share, because I think they're relevant to this discussion. Mr. Hoff, per Mr. Hoff, this intent component that we're discussing, he believes that without the intent, you would have the current trespass, which is already in our code. This would create a more serious charge than the one that's currently in our code. It would be a more serious charge, which might have deterrent value to prevent auto thefts, that might get the word out that Westminster is not trespassing cars. But it's that extra intent makes it a more serious charge, which also takes it out of being an automatic personal recognizance bond, which I think would allow for them to be jailed.
Yes.
So, so that's the seriousness level, has this extra deterrent potential. If the possibility of being jailed and not getting a PR bond is desired, this intent provision is one way to accomplish that. So I think that's what Mr. Hoff was thinking when he drafted it. That's, it's a more serious charge than the trespass that's already in the code.
Well, well, really, my goal, as I've said before, and this is the last time, is to have fewer stolen cars, not to put more people in there.
Okay, we've got Mayor Protam, C- Counselor Seymour, and Counselor Isati. Mayor Protam?
I would say that part of the goal was less stolen cars, but some of these other things we've been talking about certainly are it. I think my, my ask, when we first started having this conversation, was really to you guys, both the court and the police department, say, give us the things that are the biggest headache in the city, and let's make people know that we're not going to put up with. And so, there's a couple of those things. And I, to me, if jail is the deterrent, because I think it is, and I think that we've seen that over the last two years when we stopped jailing people, then people didn't take it serious. And then, and I really think that you're not allowing people to really think about their decisions, and I think that it's a negative effect that's not really helping. We, we've heard a lot about the, you know, justice in a way that we're thinking, we don't want to victimize people who are down on their left, but really what we've been doing, we've been allowing them to rack up crimes while they're waiting to go to court. We're not breaking the cycle where maybe they're, you know, using and they're just able to keep fueling that. So, I, I actually like the intent, and I would look to you guys, if you think that's the best tool, I would want to remove it for the reasons that you've said, because you think jail is a deterrent, and that's why, why we do it. And, you know, I would hope that you use the court's discretion when that's appropriate, when it's not, and I feel comfortable that that's what we do here. But, my, my real goal, you know, in short, was give you guys the tools to go after the things we see the most, knowing that there will be a waterfall in that Westminster.
And I, I believe that, that we have somewhere in our, our mind, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the majority of the motor vehicle thefts are done currently to commit other crimes. And so, the, the joyriding thing, especially in the middle of winter, is not what we're looking at here. When we get 29 stolen cars one week, 17 the next week, 11 the next week, these are from the, the weekly updates, on and on and on, the, these are not, these are not joyriding, and these are people that are stealing packages, committing other crimes, and those are the ones. So if the intent part gives us what we need for that next spot, and we can, you know, do bond instead of, you know, just let it go, then I'm, I'm willing to give that a shot first.
Just have a clarifying question. Does that intent apply to just the driver? Because what if a, so, what if a person steals a car, goes and picks up their girlfriend, who has no idea, police stops that selling car, are they both then charged?
Short answer is no, with the facts you just described, you know, we would have to have evidence that girlfriend in, in your hypothetical scenario had the intent to commit another crime inside that car. And I'll also offer, you know, one of the prosecutors should be a, a filter or screening mechanism of sorts when the, to serve the interests of justice. So, let's say a charge got filed, and I review that case, and I say, gee, girlfriend, I, I mean, maybe she knew her boyfriend wasn't a great guy, but it really doesn't seem like she had much knowledge that the vehicle was stolen. That changes how I evaluate that case, and, and I may dismiss that case if I think the interests of justice are served by dismissing that case. Likewise, if somebody pleads not guilty, I, I have to convince six jurors unanimously, beyond a reasonable doubt, that that person is guilty, and, and the jurors should also act as arbiters of the evidence and justice in deciding whether or not I've proven that case. So, if, if the concern is a scenario where somebody may not have reason to know that car was stolen, first, the language of this draft should catch that, you know, I have to prove that they had the intent to commit another crime. And even if I didn't have to prove that, I, I, I have to decide that prosecuting this case serves the interest of justice. And if I decide that it doesn't, that should be caught there.
And, to your point then too, if there's two people in the car, you have to prove each one had the intent, not just one of them.
Yes, yeah, i- i- if one person in the vehicle, if I could prove that person had the intent, that intent does not apply to anybody else in the vehicle.
And same with these other code changes, for that second person?
Yes. Yeah, now, unless, the short answer to that question's yes, unless I can prove that they encouraged, promoted, or facilitated another person in committing a crime, but, but if they're encouraging, promoting, or facilitating, they also have the intent to be helping commit that crime.
Good thing you're the best, though. So we have no, we have no issues with that.
Okay, I see. No more questions.
So the fourth and final change that's proposed is maybe the most unusual compared to, I'd, I'd say, theft or theft of parts or trespassing in the car. This is a civil nuisance abatement process that would be designed to address street racing. So, other cities have been in the news recently, because they take the cars. When someone is caught street racing, they lose their cars. And the thought is, that is a great deterrent to engaging in street racing, because if you're a street racer, presumably you're very attached to your car. So this is a civil process. It would be a whole new chapter, and that's why tonight's packet is 50 pages on this subject. This is a chapter that would create a new nuisance abatement that would address basically street racing. And it's, my understanding, the owner of the car is really the person who has the ability to challenge this abatement process of their car. And if they're, if they're not the ones who are street racing, maybe they get a different result than if they are the owner who's also street racing. So, for example, a parent whose child takes a car street racing might be in a different position when it comes to losing the car than the child who's racing their own car. So, what would you add on this process?
Sure. So, what I would add is, you know, as Mr. Frankel described, it's a civil nuisance abatement procedure, and what the city would be doing is taking action against the vehicle itself, not necessarily against the owner or the driver, although certainly it will have impacts over the owner. And, and what we're doing is, we're essentially stopping the vehicle from being used in a nuisance way, similar to what we might do with property, if it's emitting noxious fumes or something like that, we would take action against that property. And specifically, the way this draft is worded, officers would have to essentially have evidence that the vehicle was being used for some very specific purposes. And those purposes are vehicular eluding, or eluding a police officer, or attempting to elude a police officer, reckless driving, speeding 40 or more over the speed limit, engaging in a speed contest, engaging in an exhibition of speed, vehicular assault, vehicular homicide, or DUI and DWAI. Now, tho- those criminal charges that I just referenced, those could be filed in essentially concurrent criminal cases and a civil nuisance abatement happening at the same time. So it might be, you know, we don't do vehicular homicides in municipal court. So it might be if somebody is, if there's probable cause they committed a vehicular homicide, they might be prosecuted criminally in district court while we in municipal court take action against that vehicle. Or, for example, street racing, exhibition of a speed contest and speed contest, we do prosecute those charges in municipal court, but we might have two cases. The criminal charge of engaging in a speed contest and the civil nuisance abatement action against the vehicle. What comes up fairly frequently from what we've learned, at least in Denver, is the owner of the vehicle is not the person who is engaging in the crime. Most commonly, it seems to be, parent owns the vehicle, young child is doing something stupid in the vehicle. The reason Mr. Frankel led with that example is because we might take a, a different route if we believe the behavior can be stopped without having to take somebody's car. And if you think of the parent-child relationship dynamic, the way it would work with this code drafted is, if police officers observed and had evidence that somebody was committing one of the crimes that I listed in that vehicle, they could impound the vehicle, they write up an affidavit, the judge signs off on probable cause, a probable cause exists, that vehicle was being used for one of these prohibited acts, that's how we comply with the due process clause of our United States Constitution, is we write up an affidavit, or the police write up an affidavit, and they submit that to the judge, the judge agrees there is probable cause. And then, we may speak with the owner of the vehicle, if it's a parent, and the city believes that the parent will abide by a temporary restraining order that we're going to ask the judge to impose, and, and really, the conditions of that temporary restraining order would be things like, your child cannot drive this vehicle, this vehicle cannot be used in the commission of any of these acts. And if we sit down with that person, and we talk with them, and we believe that, that they will abide by the temporary restraining order, we may then allow the vehicle to be released to the owner's custody, trusting that the temporary restraining order will be respected. Now, if we, let's say the owner of the vehicle is the young person, and they've done all the work to their vehicle, the loud muffler, the lowered, the light, we think they're engaging in, in speed contests, we may not have the same conversation where we allow that vehicle to be released with them, especially depending on what their previous driver's history is. If, if we essentially don't trust that the vehicle will not be used for one of these nuisance purposes, we may impound the vehicle for a certain period of time, and that's how we ensure that the nuisance is abated. The vehicle stays impounded and nobody can drive. So, so there are some different options that can be exercised depending on what the scenario is, who the owner is, because, you know, it's not one size fits all. The, the goal is to abate the nuisance, not to take people's vehicles or, or things like that. So, abating the nuisance may look different in each. So abating the nuisance may look different in each different scenario.
And Hafner memo describes Denver's approach, Aurora's approach, other cities have the same challenge. So the proposal here is informed by both, I'd say the Denver and the Aurora, but more closely aligned with the Denver model. I guess we're just looking for some feedback. Is this conceptually something council's interested in? Or do you have questions about how it would work?
Counselor Nivella?
I noticed that in the write-up, Denver's model was that you, they immediately impounded the vehicle. And so the only question I had was, we're trying to have this flexibility, and we were, and I think it recommended that we would follow the Denver model more, more closely. How does that work with, like, if it is a parent, or if it's somebody whose vehicle has been stolen? Do they have to pay for the impoundment? And what would be the option if it, because I think Aurora didn't automatically impound the vehicle? So I'm just kind of like, what does, does it look like if not immediately?
We, we looked at both ordinances very closely. We viewed Denver's as just more practical in terms of application. To the second issue, you said, what if it's someone's stolen car? This will not be applicable. Someone steals your car and goes and races down the street and you get it back, presumably it stopped being a nuisance as soon as it's returned to the person who doesn't view it as a race car and uses it as, you know, a vehicle. But in a lot of other circumstances, what we've learned in dealing with the people who've gone forward with these ordinances, is that other kinds of vehicles are used. And in fact, that is part of how they keep the racing going, is different people are in different cars and we can't, it's hard to catch a car that's going really fast and also on a public safety. And so we can figure out that a car's been involved with racing, but we may not be able to put the person behind the wheel. And so we can, we know what's happening, we can prove that well. And so this allows us to do something about the vehicle that is an instrument in street racing. Common one is, you know, two people are racing in the street, the police officer, we're fortunate, and just to stop one, the other commits felony eluding. If we're fortunate enough to also be able to tell what that car is, we may not be able to have the crime. But we can go after the fact that that car was used as an instrument in crime. So then the, what do we do next? That's where it becomes very nuanced. And so all these questions are then broken down because, and are going to be extremely contextual. So one parent who has a child may be eminently trustworthy for, you know, a variety of reasons to say, this car can go home to you, if we're going to return it to you and it has a very brief period of impound, yes, they will need to pay for the impound. Another situation may not, we just can't get to that circumstance, like maybe we have better evidence that this has happened more. Or some, you know, it's, it's hard to capture, you know, things we'll consider in a few sentences, the answers will look at the circumstance.
And Counselor Nivella, I think it's also important to understand that what this does is it gives our officers and the city tools to do things when it's appropriate. It doesn't require that the vehicle is ever impounded at any point. So a, a, an officer does not lose their discretion. If they see one of these crimes and they call up the owner of the vehicle and it's the parents, they can exercise their discretion and not impound that vehicle. They, and, and similarly, even if the vehicle is impounded, pretty quickly, city prosecutors can work to release that vehicle if we believe that's appropriate, if it's burdening somebody, if they can't get to work, if we, you know, those sorts of things. So it doesn't require that all these vehicles will be impounded regardless of what the circumstances are or what the evidence shows.
We also created purposely to have kind of a judicial review at an early stage in the process, which is not a part of either ordinance, but we thought it would both honor due process and then kind of reduce liability concerns, like if there was insufficient evidence to get started with this process from the judicial point of view, we're going to be releasing the car very quickly. And so if you look at the, the flowchart that I think Markoff provided, there's some questions about time that we're still ironing out whether we're going to require things to happen in a certain condensed period of time right at the outset, to try to address these things when, because the, the people involved are going to be human beings, and so they're going to come in a lot of different, you know, levels of involvement. We're trying to create a code that lets us respond to the ones that are serious and need response and isn't overly heavy.
You kind of hit it on the head. I was just going to ask about discretion, because I know, like, anybody who's done the academy, they talk a lot about curbing the behavior, so I just wanted to make sure that that existed and you answered that, so thank you.
For me, living on 36, so I hear it once, well, they've already started because we've had a couple of nice nights, but I got caught in it. So you've got two that slow, because we've got three lanes there because of the express lane. So they've got three cars that will line up and slow you down. It was very frightening. Didn't know what was going on.
Like 30 miles an hour slowed down.
Oh, 20. And I'm going through my, what did I learn? So I'm looking at, because I didn't know what they're going to do. And I'm thinking, we're almost Westminster Boulevard, or to Church Ranch, where I was going to get off. But I'm thinking, if they're going to slow us down, and, and it was late, I was coming home from the hospital with Shay. And I'm going, all right, I don't know if they're going to steal my car, if they're, what they're going to do, so I'm thinking ahead. And I'm looking over to my right side because there is Westminster Boulevard over there, and they had just been working on that median and taking the farmer's fence down. So I'm going, okay, where is it that I can get off of here, get down there without wrecking the car and get on, on Westminster Boulevard? But once they got us to that point, then they're really slowing down, be, because once their cars are waiting, and once they knew no one was going to be coming further because they're in charge now, then the two racers shoot out of the exit going onto 36 that there is nothing between there and Broomfield exit. That's where they're racing. Can you use drones? Question. What happens to those two that are impeding the traffic to cause the racers to race? That's what's happening. And I don't know what happened to our, what did we call it? Cops on patrol? Citizens on patrol? But there, we could have citizens sitting because now we have nice bike lanes, we could have them sitting on top of, of Church Ranch Boulevard, watching, taking pictures, doing whatever you needed to do, and we could get it stopped. That's what I wake up at night thinking.
Those slow cars, those cars could be addressed by an ordinance like that is exactly why we think this would be appropriate. It's hard to figure out who's in that car, and going slow on a highway is, can be impeding, but there's just trouble with impeding charges and so on. And stopping three cars is nearly impossible from a police point of view. So, so we might be able to figure out it's the three cars, we've seen it in this race, maybe we have more than one race. That's exactly what the goal is, is to go after the people who are facilitating these races, so it's no longer profitable to do it.
And we had a night not too long ago, probably two summers ago, where the word was out, and the officers knew about it, but it was pandemic time, we were short of officers, and over 300 cars were in the Walnut Creek shopping after hours. And they were doing donuts, you could hear that squealing of the tires and doing all sorts of things. And then they would race behind where PetSmart is to Target, because that, that has, doesn't have speed bumps. And that's the reason I go that direction when I'm going to get to Target, so I don't have to go over all those bumbly bumps, getting there, going through the regular place. So they know that, and they know that the park and ride parking lot's back there, so they can do crazy things over there. But it was too big, I mean, that was too big of a crowd. You send even six officers over there, they would have been overwhelmed.
Well, they, they can't do, they don't have right now any motivation to just capture the information that we're talking about, because it doesn't really move the needle from a law enforcement purpose generally. This allows them to kind of change their focus, what vehicles are here? And if I may, the, the reason our graffiti ordinance is worked well when we were approaching that aggressively is because graffiti is the kind of crime that's committed by a small group of people who talk to each other. And this is the same kind of thing. And so we don't need to go grab every one of their car. We grab one or two of these things with good evidence, and we very well might have them just make their plans in another city. You know, I mean, we're not hoping to start using this all over the place. We're hoping to communicate to this social group.
Right now, we know they use Federal, they use Sheridan, they use 112, they use Westminster Boulevard and the Turnpike and 104th. So there's, everybody in the city listens to them. And I can be talking to Dino Valente and hear it at 72nd and say, oh, well, they're here now. And, and I don't know who has the real jurisdiction on 36. I know the State Patrol when we built it was supposed to, but I've seen two in the last eight years. So I know, maybe we need to build coalitions with all of the cities along the thing and get out there for a few nights.
This, this is not a conversation that's unique to the city of Westminster. I mean, the, the same group, the nature is they're mobile, right? They're in and out of jurisdictions. And so the hope is, you know, we don't just want to push them out of the city of Westminster and, and, you know, cause public safety problems somewhere else. The hope is that other jurisdictions will take similar approaches and, you know, with a, with a more pervasive attempt at addressing this public safety issue.
I'm here to answer your question. We are involved in a task force with multiple other agencies around. During the summer months, once every, I can't remember, and I apologize that the timeline, but they go out together and they focus on the areas. They have people working intel, trying to gather where they're going to be. So we are. It's, we're in a very strong, strong group of 30, 40 officers every time we go out there with all the other jurisdictions.
I think there's some key points that if the police department decided they needed citizens on patrol again, I think they could give you quick intel, what's starting to gather quickly, and they don't have to do anything more. They just can sit on bike paths or wherever and watch it happen and let you all know. So it's not your turn until they're telling you, they're doing it now. But I didn't know if you could use drones, because I know we have drone operators now, and I can show that's legal to use them to catch these little hookers.
I, I don't know the FAA rules over, over 36. We have used the drones over that. But it, it becomes a challenge, just as we're saying, you never know where they're going. If there's somebody on the side of the road, they'll move, they're talking to each other. But, but yes, the drone F has to consideration. I've never heard that being used, but I don't know the rules or regulations on it.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah, I'm against arresting people's property. I don't think people should lose their property unless they're convicted of a crime. So if you convict someone of that and they forfeit their property, I'm okay with it. I don't think it's right to arrest their property, or their parents' property, or whatever property it is, and do that function. I think you need to convict an individual of a crime, so I would be against this nuisance approach.
Anyone else?
I, I can disagree with, I don't disagree with you in principle, but we have individuals that know that if they exceed the safety limit, they're not going to be stopped, because we're not going to chase them at 100 miles an hour. And our residents are demanding that action be taken. And so, can a, you know, can a car commit a crime? I don't know, we hear all these things. An SUV killed these. Well, no, the SUV didn't, it was just part of that. But i- i- is that if, if we can't find a way to address this based on current times and what's happening, I mean, it used to be in the old days, if you were drag racing, you weren't going to get away because the cop was going to catch you because they were faster than you no matter what. Right now, it's safety. And, and these criminals are jeopardizing people's lives with a car. And that is their instrument. And we can't catch them. We can't just throw up our hands and say, well, we can't catch them because they, there's, you know, they figured out that, oh, we go faster than them and they're not going to get them, because they won't pursue them.
I somewhat agree on both ends. However, like, I would want to know that, that this is being done in a way that you're stopping you. Not like you just, you know, pick this car out of nowhere and, and you're coming up with reasonable ways to say that, you know, as it's being tried, it could be returned, you know, while it's pending court. So I don't have the same concern that we're just arbitrarily taking property, or taking property we've seen being used in a crime. I mean, I have to imagine you have to have some sort of evidence showing that that was the case in order to use such a, a tool. Am I tracking right? Like, you kind of
We start with the evidence too. We have to have a statement of the evidence that we actually have for the court to allow us to initiate. And so that can be initiated like any other crime where a police makes sufficient observation. It'll also, I think, a lot of times particularly, at first, we're going to want it to come through our office with referrals and all the evidence, so we can make sure that we're setting a standard that's going to be appreciated going forward. But you'll see that there's a fairly expedited timeline that leads to a hearing where we have to prove this against the property. Now, it's a preponderance of the evidence, because we're talking about property as opposed to a personal civil liberty. But it's certainly, the concerns that you're raising about due process are not ignored. This isn't just the city taking people's stuff. I also, it's important to see that this is different than a taking, like, when we take people's drug profits. This is an action against property that's being used. And so to the degree of, then what do we do? The goal is to remediate the harm that's being, the property's causing. And so that's why you'll see there are certainly severe approaches that can be taken in that circumstances, but there's nothing in this code you'll see that requires it. Really what it requires is that we kind of get a baseline of what's going on, that the owner, the person who owns the property acknowledges that this is a problem, and then works with us over a period of time to keep it from being a problem going forward. That's the goal.
And so on that light, I mean, I, I think about, I brought up joking earlier, you know, cruising, which I did, was one of those people. But it stopped because there was a rule, but we stopped doing it. And I have to imagine you had the same thing. I don't know how exactly you tracked, tracked us, but we saw the signs and we stopped doing it. I wasn't going to keep driving around and find out. But, you know, even more than that, if I, if I think about in terms of, somebody mentioned gun, we're teaching a teenage driver right now, and this is deadly weapon. When you're behind it and you're not using it properly, it's a deadly weapon. If we saw somebody misusing a deadly weapon, a gun, I sure as hell hope we would take it away. And I'm one of the biggest Second Amendment supporters in this room. So to me, it's, it's no different. If there is a good, solid evidence that you could prove in court to take it, that, you know, then I don't have a problem with that. And I, I don't think that that's a violation of property rights. So I'm supportive of it because I, I think that we, we have to do something. You mentioned people losing their life. We did have somebody lose their life because of somebody street racing recently, you know, because the roads aren't meant. Actually, ever since that one by Westminster, the wreck, like, I don't even like driving up that street because you, you can see it. If somebody's going that fast up that street, they're not going to be able to see people coming out of the wreck center. So to me, I think we have a duty to figure something out. And so, you know, I, I look forward to hearing whatever details you, you tweak on this, but I certainly think that we can't just do nothing.
Nivella? I had a very similar sentiments to Mayor Pro-Tam. I'm also, you know, I also share concern over property and our willingness to take it without, you know, some type of reasoning behind it. And so that was more my thought too, is like, if the car is being used as a deadly weapon, that is something that goes beyond. I mean, that's, that's the nature of a car, just like a gun can be used really, you know, just to hurt somebody. And I, and if we have some proof that they've been doing it, it makes sense to be able to take it, so.
Counsel, so that, that is built into this draft. In fact, so the, the judge would have to sign off on a probable cause determination. Police officer would have to write out an affidavit saying, here's the probable cause that this vehicle committed one of these offenses, or was engaged in the commission of one of these offenses. The judge signs off on probable cause. That's actually the same procedure. That's actually the same procedure when arresting a person. You know, if somebody's arrested and there wasn't a previous warrant signed off, they have to write up an affidavit in support of warrantless arrest. The judge approves that for that person to remain in custody. So, we'd be providing the same due process protections in seizing this property that are required when arresting a person and putting a person in jail.
Talked about so many organs, because I think I'm starting to blend them. So, can you clarify, because I'm, I guess my original thought in this is that the car was stolen, but now I'm hearing that the, that it's ownership, and they're using it to, or commit crime, or whatever.
This is an abatement on the property. So, this property is doing something or involved with something that's a problem. It doesn't, it's not about the owner. Who owns it matters in terms of what do we do next, you know? I mean, like, we'd be questioning those stolen, we're not going to abate your nuisance if someone stole your car and raced it.
Yeah, so, if I could jump in there, Counselor, the, the first three we discussed, motor vehicle theft, motor vehicle trespass, and removal of motor vehicle parts, those are drafts of criminal violations. This, it's called vehicle closure, this, this vehicle nuisance abatement is not a criminal charge, so it doesn't have the potential of jail time, it's a civil action taken against the property. So, it's not that vehicles that are stolen don't engage in these things, I, I'm sure they do, but when that vehicle's recovered, it's given back to its owner, and we don't need to abate a nuisance, because the problem is now solved itself. The owner now has the vehicle, the person who stole it no longer has it. This would be used in situations where, where the vehicle is, is not stolen, because we have the ongoing concern that we still need to abate the nuisance. We still need to ensure that this property is not used in the dangerous manner as outlined in this code. Does that make sense?
My original thought is that it was stolen, and which would put me in enlightenment with Counselor Baker, because therefore, I think you're then having an unintended consequence for, because if a gun was stolen, and I had ownership of it, and somebody else, or manner, it's not my fault, right? Like, that's, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that to happen in this case for a vehicle if it was stolen and then used in street racing a criminal way. So, that changes my perspective as far as where I see this in, in its current form, because I was leaning more towards Aurora's, and I was wondering why we went more towards Denver's, but I think you explained it well, and the fact that it's just, it's a process that we can use that could have more substance potentially. And so, as written, now that I, I clarified, I, I'm more in line with where you're going with it, so thank you for that.
Okay. So, you've got the majority of folks saying?
Of course.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything with the other stuff.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it, very much appreciate the direction.
And to our person that's sick, thanks for writing us, even though.
Thank you, Mr. Ha.
You had to stay awake. Counselor Baker?
I have one more question. How many times would it have to be used as a nuisance before we, once, or two, twice?
Before we what, sorry?
Before we arrested the property.
You, I, that would depend on the, the facts of that particular case. If, if it's the first time it happened, and it's extremely egregious, and it's dangerous, that it, it could happen the first time. If there's a record, especially if you look at somebody's driver's history, and it's, and it's not the most dangerous in the world, but it's happening repeated times, those are the kind of things that typically factor into police and prosecutors' decision-making on how to either file charges or take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a quick break before we executive session? You look like we're going to do.
Or other folks?